Say that again.
Yeah, he emailed just before the start of the meeting. He's going to join us in executive session. But he'll be commuting so he won't be in the regular meeting or the rest of the work session. Do you follow?
Yeah, I know, but I can't open up ABC without Victor.
I'm not, Joe, the third clause of action has been dismissed by the court.
The seventh, the one against us was dismissed.
So you guys are no longer recusing yourselves? Is that what you're saying?
All right, we don't think we need to, but.
I mean, that's fine with me, but it's your choice. So just tell me what you want to do.
All right. I think at this point, we we are able to join the meeting. If something changes, then we have to change. That's all. The court, the court issued a decision.
Okay, I didn't, you know, I just didn't want to put you in a precarious situation. All right, let's get started. Good evening. And welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting, work session for March, May 24th, 2021. May I have a motion to open the meeting?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, as is our want these days, we're going to go right to the executive session agenda. I'm going to read out the the causes of the executive session. And then at the end, please, if you have to recuse yourself on a matter, just specify which matter that you've recused yourself on. And then we'll have a vote. Garden Road, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session to pursuant to 1051H of the Public Officers Laws as it pertains to sale of real property and a publicity of such would substantially affect its value. B, Hampshire Recreation LLC, also known as Hampshire Recreation versus the Village of Mamernick, round three. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session with accordance with 1051D to discuss matters of current litigation. C, Jagoda versus Board of Managers is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session in accordance with 1051D to discuss matters of proposed pending a current litigation. D, EPA versus Westchester Joint Water Works is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session in accordance with 1051D to discuss matters of proposed pending a current litigation. E, Police Department matter, personnel matter, is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session in accordance with 1051F of the New York State Public Officers Law to discuss the medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. F, appointment to the Board of Ethics. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session in accordance with 1051F of the New York State Public Officers Law to discuss medical financial credit and employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. G, this is being added, ABC Properties versus the Village of Mamernick, and that is also under 1051D litigation.
Tom?
Yeah.
I'd like to also add the village attorney, if Victor actually, to the meeting, which is the same as E.
I know, I'm not in favor of that, so you know, you can make the motion to amend.
I'd make a motion to amend.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're going to vote on a motion to amend. While we call a roll. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
No.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mary Murphy?
No.
Next time, please try not to do it at the last second. We talked about this before.
All right. You didn't tell us about ABC before. I just learned, just.
Vic, Victor sent an email early this week about ABC. Victor sent an email early this week, about a couple of emails about ABC.
Early this week is today, though.
No, you know, he sent emails before, nor sent emails during the past few days.
Okay.
And so that.
Not to us, but that's okay.
You, but yeah, but you two weren't on the emails.
Okay.
Because you supposedly recused.
Well, I would explain that we were accused because we were individually named in the second, in the seventh cause of action. That lawsuit was, that decision, that lawsuit was dismissed, so we are no longer involved in that lawsuit. And we're still united in interest in the other causes of action that you, that all the planning, zoning, and Board of Trustees are.
Right, but my point is, is that this was discussed by the people who knew we weren't recused.
Well, some, I mean, you should have known because that was, that was circulated.
I wasn't sending out the emails.
No, no, I'm just saying that there, that should have been conveyed. That, I mean, Bob's not involved in this, but that should have been conveyed ten days ago.
Okay. On the regular, not amended executive session, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes, however, I'll be recusing on the Hampshire matter.
Natchez?
Yes, but I'm recusing on Garden Road.
Mary Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, I'll see you folks in executive session. Hi, folks. The crew will be in in a minute. We just, we just had the motions to go into executive session. Okay, Mr. Henry and Mr. Barbario, we're here at this first part of the executive.
Tom, Tom, you're still, your video, your audio is still live.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Speaker.
I can speak.
I can speak. Victor coming back.
Victor's not back yet.
Could give him a minute. Good evening. We are back out of executive session. In executive session, there were two votes, votes taken. The first vote was a motion to appoint Jerry Barbario as a hearing officer in a police 207C matter. The second vote was to appoint Mr. Spalzino and his firm to advise the village in the litigation. Jagoda, the board of managers, which has to do with the Rigata condominium corporation. And the village has a seat on that board of managers. All of these votes were unanimous votes. And that, that's the two votes that were taken in executive session. Okay, there are two items on the agenda that are on for the regular meeting. The first one is the funding cycles for community development block grants. Schedule public hearing funding cycles. This is just scheduling the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, none.
I'm, I'm in favor of scheduling the hearing. What concerns me is there's detail, this is a detailed thing that we knew about before, we never, we just didn't put, we didn't publicize that. And that, you know, we just simply said, the only thing that was said is things around the romantic school. So that, that particularly, that bothers me. I'm happy to schedule for a public hearing, but I also am concerned about prioritization. And, you know, for all, all project, all capital project.
But I think Dan Sarnoff explained this as to why this particular capital project was more likely to get grant funding.
I understand that, and I'm all for getting grant funding, but we also have to pay money. It's not 100% grant, it's a shared grant. So and it, there are, you know, there are significant dollars involved. So I don't mind having the here, scheduling the hearing. I'm concerned potentially of going forward the way it is until we straighten some things out and put some priorities together.
I, I think, and you know, this is going to be, I guess this is a multi-year cycle, but I think we didn't do the best job about advertising what potential projects could be funded. And so when we had the public hearings, we didn't get a lot of public input. So these, these were sort of projects that were picked by staff and I think maybe a little bit the traffic commission.
No, no, the traffic commission.
That coming out of these studies, it didn't, none of these are initiatives from the walking studies.
This, these are not.
Yeah, no. But they are, they are in an area, Nora, that's low and moderate income.
Yeah, where, where we can, where, where we're eligible to, to actually get community development block grant funding. So it seems to me like these are likely projects to get funded and that's our goal. We have to apply for projects that are likely to get funded.
Because if we put in projects that are not in the low mod income area.
We're not going to get them.
We're not going to get it. And then we have to wait for the next funding cycle and all of that stuff. So we're somewhat limited as, as just to, you know, just to help Dan out. We're somewhat limited as far as which projects we can put in. And, and I agree that there's, you know, some cost to the village as far as our cost share. But these funding cycles, once you miss and then you have to wait, whatever it is, two years later to, to reapply, it gets difficult.
But my point, Jerry, is there are lots of projects that could be undertaken in that area. Not just the ones that were named. Really haven't come to grips with that. And part of the issue, and if I, if, when we set this originally for a public hearing, it was to get input. We, and people asked about what was being done and said, well, we just want to get input. Really is, we are, we, the village already had approaches, we're willing to consider more by staff. Really had, we, we have no game plan, no long-term game plan and prioritization on it.
On the projects that potentially could be undertaken in that area. That's what, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I understand that. In, in that area, there are, there are lots of projects that could be undertaken.
And, and what you would be, you would ask, you would ask staff to do is prioritize those projects. No, you'd have staff to present the projects and then have the board prioritize those projects.
Which is what I, which, which is what I thought we were aiming to do.
Okay.
But we didn't, we didn't get there and, you know, and I don't have a problem moving forward with that, but we have a, we have a major issue of, you know, we just passed a budget, the ink isn't even dry. We stayed under the cap by $107 or something like that, $107 or something like that. And we already have reduced the revenue by substantially more than that. And I'm not saying the decisions to do that were wrong. But in creating that, the operating budget, we took hundreds of thousands of dollars of operating expenses and moved them into the capital budget. Or said they would be taken care of with the capital budget. And we have significant dollars. We had at the last board meeting, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in projects that were presented that were worked on, quote, for a long time, yet never was before the board and was never prioritized. I'm not saying that any of them are wrong. I'm not saying that anything that is imposed is not a benefit to the village. That is not what I am trying to connote. But in terms of, you know, sharing information and trying to prioritize things as what and, you know, how much we can actually spend. But for every $3 million in capital projects that we approve to go forward, it, you know, we're raising the, the tax rate by one, over 1% in, in next year's, but the following year's budget before we've even had a budget meeting.
But in, in the, in the, in the spreadsheets and documentation we provided the board of trustees, we do have items there that would be 100% the village cost and other projects like these that would allow us to go after and secure, probably successfully secure funding through, you know, state and, and, and federal means. That's in the documentation we provided though. We provided that to you guys.
You know, that, it, I, I don't think there's been any capital projects done that the board did not approve.
We haven't approved capital projects. And everything that since, since October, I'm talking to them. Since October, we've had, you know, the budget committee worked very hard on trying to create recommendations and put it forth to the board in October for how to create prioritization, you know, and how to rank them. And we've never done that.
I have, I have done that based on the expectation. I can give you the document right now, based on the documentation that Len provided me that the board, that the, the, the budget committee reviewed. I created the criteria scale. I followed the, the, the prioritization for capital budgeting that Len Aubrey developed for the budget committee. I've done that. That's available. I can give it to you right now.
What we got is we got a list of, we got two, we got two different things, Jerry. We got a list of a spreadsheet with dollars spread over five years, you know, of potential issue, things to be done. You know, of potential capital projects and needs. And then we got another spreadsheet without dollars.
Yeah.
You know, listing every piece of equipment we have in the village. None of them had the fireboat. None of them have the, the transfer station. None of them have, which we approved, you know, conceptually approved at our last meeting, have the issues that you've asked for, you know, put on the agenda, you know, for consideration, the work session, which we may or may not get to tonight. None of the, none of those things are there and they're all important things. I'm not saying they're not.
Okay.
We have not, the board as a board has not prioritized them. They haven't, we haven't said how much we really can spend and how much we have, can spend and what has to come first.
Okay, can I, can I just interrupt here? And we don't, we didn't, we didn't buy a fireboat. We, we bought a police boat and we, we were only, we were only paying $50,000 for a 45, $450,000 boat. And we didn't buy the boat. What we did was that vote allowed the police department to put in a request for a grant to get the boat. So that wasn't a capital project. But we decided that night then was just to allow the police department to apply for a grant to pay for 90% of the boat.
When, and mayor, when we developed our master capital plan, criteria scale and cost estimates, the boat was not enough, a grant opportunity at the time. That grant opportunity came to us recently. So the harbor master and the police chief discussed taking advantage of that. So it was missing from the documentation I provided because it wasn't even, wasn't even the thought that we would be able to get a $400,000 boat for $50,000.
Exactly. And we don't have it. And it, in, all we have is the ability to apply for the grant. So it, it's not fair to say that we, you know, did that as a capital project because we haven't.
Now, I have a criteria scale. I worked weeks on a criteria scale. It's there with my prioritization. If the board wants to take the criteria scale and develop criteria based on each trustee's individual thought process on how things should be, should, should be ranked. And I'm following the board, I'm following the budget committee's ranking recommendations.
Yeah, and you, you asked us to do that.
But I've done it for you.
You've asked us for that and I, I replied with my two priorities. Did anybody else on the board reply with their priorities?
I did.
So let, let, if, if we're going to talk about priorities, let's get proactive and tell the gentleman what are priorities.
Or just let me set the priorities, writing them before the board. And if the board votes it down, they vote it down.
Correct. It's not a question of voting it down. It's not a question saying that what you, what you would prefer to do and how you prioritize it is right or wrong. It is, we don't have, we have not put together the priorities in terms of both the dollars and the individual projects and what, and, and say, here's how much we can spend. You know, and this is the if clause in effect, this is where we potentially get funding for. And here's the clause and effect, and this is what, how we should be moving forward.
And we have discussed at budget committee how much we can spend each year though. I recall talking about that several times. I also recall providing you the cost estimate Excel spreadsheet with the items that we could apply for grant funding.
Yes.
It's in that, it's, everything is there. The problem is somehow the presentation needs to be communicated to us so we can change the method of presentation to provide it to the board. If that's the case, I'll create whatever type of picture you're looking for, but I got to know.
I understand that, Jerry, and I agree with you on that. But we, you have projects, you, you know, the transfer station, the police station, the harbor master roof, none of those are in there. And from the documentation, it appears that it's been going on for some time on your radar scale, and you know, needing to be dealt with. And I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't deal with it. And I'm not suggesting that they're inappropriate. I'm suggesting that we aren't, we aren't really managing it in a way that gives us a direction of what we can do and where we have to draw the line and say, whoops, we'll have to wait more.
But how do you suppose we do that?
Okay. Just the discussion that was this is, do we want this on the agenda for tonight? And the answer to that is yes. Okay, we have another item to discuss. You know, we, we, we can't have this go on all night. We have another item to discuss before we break and go to our regular meeting. And that item is the recognition of June as Pride Month. This came to the board through the citizenry. Originally, a woman named Leslie Finley, a Rynick resident, wrote me an email about it and I thought it was a good idea. And I asked her to gauge the sentiment in the community for this flag. Ms. Finley, within 10 days, got over 400 signatures in support of this. I, I, you know, we all received a copy of the signatures. Many people have been very, very active in this community for decades. This is, I believe, an important symbol. Doesn't cure anything, but it's an important symbol. For me, I look, what I've learned and what I look at in, in this country is whether it's racial discrimination or discrimination against LGBTQ people. This discrimination was not just done by folks on an individual basis. A lot of times this discrimination was codified in law. LGBTQ people, you know, could not adopt, they could not marry, they could not inherit, they could not have all of the benefits of our regular citizenry. I, you know, I, I, I grew up on the west side of Manhattan. And when I was a kid, the neighborhood was changing a lot. And in the late seventies and the early eighties, a, a lot of gay people moved into the community. And there was a lot of ugliness by you know, people in my community against the new people that came in. And, you know, it, 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 you know, it, it hurt a lot of people, both physically and emotionally. You know, I think all discrimination, you know, it obviously hurts the people that are discriminated against, but it also hurts the people who are doing the discriminating. You know, it, it, it is a, a blot that, you know, you carry around with you. And I think, you know, for a lot of us in my generation, you know, young men, you know, we, we were sold the bill of goods that, you know, that it was, you know, it was all about, you know, your masculinity and, you know, proving that, you know, especially in that neighborhood, proving that you were a tough guy. So, you know, you, you didn't want to ever admit that you had any feelings or, so, you know, it stunted us too. You know, the, the the discrimination and the ugliness, you know, stunted other people too. But it obviously, the burden fell upon those who were discriminated against the hardest. Obviously, that's still Obviously, that's still going on. We still have twenty, twenty percent of all trans youth attempts suicide in this country. And that shouldn't be, you know, we need to be a welcoming community. Our neighboring communities are doing this. You know, I think it's something that's very important to show our kids and to show people in this community who are gay, is that, you know, this is a welcoming place. I'd like to read a copy of the resolution. It's very simple. I'd like to first thank Dan Sonoff for his great help in writing this. Whereas, all welcome in the Village of America to live, work, play, and every family in every shape deserves a place to call home with their safe, happy, and supported by their friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas, the village denounces prejudice and discrimination based upon age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origins, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas, Pride Month began in June of nineteen sixty-nine and one of the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City as the LGBTQ people and allied friends rose and fought against constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ people inspire the community by celebrating authenticity, authenticity, acceptance, and love. And whereas, the Village of America appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus community, which strengthens our social fabric. And whereas, it is imperative that our young people in the community, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, community leaders, and institutions. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees declares the month of June twenty twenty-one as LGBTQ Pride Month. In the Village of America, an urge residents to recognize the contributions made by the LGBTQ community and actively promotes the principles of equality and be further resolved to recognize and support our many citizens who are LGBTQ. The Village of America raised a pride flag over Village Hall at one sixty-nine Mount Pleasant Avenue for the month of June. And that in some substance is what's on the agenda today. Any questions or concerns, or does anybody have any objections to putting it on for the regular meeting? And the reason it's on tonight is because this started ten days ago, and this is the only meeting before June, obviously. Kelly?
I do have a comment, which is that on the federal level, in the former presidential administration, US embassies were barred from flying the gay pride flag over the embassies, and it was really a shameful decision by that administration. And that one of the things the Biden administration and Secretary of Blinken have done have been to reverse that policy. And in doing so, the State Department said that flying the flag would raise awareness of violence, human rights abuses, and discrimination targeting LGBTQ plus persons. So I think this is absolutely the right thing to do. I thank the village for following the lead of many others, and I just think it's an important way to support the community.
Nora?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I absolutely think we should do it, and I'm not sure we have to limit it to June twenty twenty-one. I mean, it could just be something that happens going forward. But I think we should absolutely do this.
Thank you. Daniel?
I'm all for it, but I have concerns about some language that is, I perceive to be negative within the resolution, which is supposed to be a positive resolution. The second, I'm sorry, on the fourth, whereas, phrase, despite being marginalized, I think that we're trying to emphasize, you know, what they are and what they do and how they are contributory. And in the next, whereas, I definitely would like to remove the we're queer. We, it's a very derogatory statement. And I would not want that, and I don't understand why we would have plus for an LGBTQ plus and then refer to it differently through the rest of the resolution, so I would take the plus out. The word plus.
Okay, the word plus is what that community wants it to be. They also, let me finish, Dan. You were asking a question, I want to tell you something. The Q is, you know, is a term that the community has embraced, and it's not derogatory. They've turned that around. And the plus was for people who are what they call gender fluid. You know, I'm not as well-versed in this, but, you know, that is taken directly from, you know, how the gay, lesbian, bi community wants to be referred to now. That wasn't something that we made up. That was, this is, you know, in honor of how they view themselves.
I believe the Q is for questioning. It's not queer in the acronym.
No, I think it's queer.
It says queer.
Queer.
And my concern is, why some may think it is a desirable thing. It has had a very bad connotation as other, one words have been used in terms of discrimination against other factions within, that we are, believe should not be. And I would be very concerned about that. I don't think it's the right tone to set. And I, I think it is embracing a potential issue that we should not be doing. I would like to remove.
Here, here, I think I have a solution. Leave the Q, the LGBTQ plus, because that's how they refer to themselves. So I'm not gonna go into that. That's how they refer to themselves. Take out the whereas, the Village of America appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic. Take out that whole whereas, where it actually says queer, if that's what offends you. And just leave the LGBTQ, because that's non-negotiable. I know that's how they.
The LGBTQ plus, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, okay, so that's why I'm trying to get rid of your problem, Dan, by getting.
You're suggesting taking out the fourth whereas, I'm sorry, the one, two, three, the fifth whereas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that, but I lost.
I don't want to take out the marginalized because it's true, it's what happened.
But I don't think, can I, I don't think, if you want to just use the the LGBTQ plus, you just can remove the other words and not.
That's what I'm saying.
Not remove, I thought you said remove the entire whereas.
Remove the entire whereas. That way you don't have, you know, because if you just, if you don't put the Q in there, then it looks like you purposely left it out.
No, what I, all I'm saying is, the whereas, it just, just, just leave the LGBTQ plus in there. You don't have to remove.
Correct, 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 correct. Well observed, Nora.
Thanks.
Okay, so Sally Roberts.
Sally, you're muted.
Yes, Tom.
Sally.
I got it.
In the fifth whereas, you got it, right? Could you do me a favor, make that change and send it to me so I can read it tonight?
You got it.
Okay, so, so we're taking the fifth, the fifth whereas out, or we're?
No, no, no. We're taking the words lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and we're just leaving LGBTQ.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, all right. It's time for dinner. Thank you all. We got through some stuff. Oh, while we're here, Dan, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. Sit. Good. Everybody okay for June first?
Yes, five P M.
Before seven thirty, I'm good for June first.
Okay, let's do from five to seven thirty.
Yep.
I can rearrange my calendar to accommodate that. I don't know, has Victor?
He hasn't weighed in, but we gotta make a meeting. Hopefully he'll weigh in. So Sally.
How are work session?
We're gonna do a work session, June first, five P M to seven thirty P M. No executive session.
Okay, and it's a Tuesday night.
No matter what happens, comes hella high water, no executive session.
And it's a Tuesday night.
It's a Tuesday night. It's the day after Memorial Day.
Correct.
And then we don't meet again until the fourteenth. So hopefully we'll knock some stuff off the agenda.
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
Like my item, trying to have an extra work session to just clear the, clear the work session.
Yeah. I need a motion to close this work session.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
See in fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yep.
Oh, Lord. You. We had the whole gang here, what? Everybody's on, I just want the other mics and cameras off. Yours on?
I just sent you an email.
Good evening. Everybody back online? Trustee Nash is? Okay. Gang's all here. Excellent. Good evening. And welcome to the May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one Village of Mamaroneck Regular Board of Trustees meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gang. Good evening, I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved. Back in.
Thank you. Uh, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Chafour will not be with us tonight. So, we're just a gang of four. So before we go to the agenda, I'm gonna take something out of order because I know there are people who have come for this item. And, uh, I don't wanna, you know, this might be a long meeting and I don't wanna have them waiting around all night. And the item I'm going to take out of order is four E. Uh, resolution authorizing June as Pride Month. Uh, this, uh, resolution, this idea, uh, came from a resident, uh, Ms. Leslie Finlay. Uh, Ms. Finlay, uh, sent me an email about it. Uh, and I, I thought it was a good idea and I asked Ms. Finlay to, you know, gauge the community and how much support there is in the community. And within ten days, uh, Ms. Finlay, uh, through, uh, a, uh, online poll had gotten over four hundred signatures of folks in the Village of Mamaroneck who support this idea. There have obviously been a handful of folks who, uh, opposed the idea. Uh, I think it is a very important initiative. This is something that, uh, is timely. June is, uh, Pride Month that we show our support for the LGBTQ community. Um, we were talking about it before and it was my belief that, uh, you know, discrimination in this country, uh, is not something that just occurred in the hearts and minds of residents. It is something that was codified in law. Uh, both racial and sexual discrimination were codified in the laws of this country. Uh, and, you know, the pendulum has not, uh, so the arc of justice has not completed its, uh, journey, uh, yet. And there still is a lot of discrimination. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, folks who, uh, face tough times because of who they are. Uh, a situation that, you know, who they are and who they love, who they care about. And, you know, it, it behooves us as a community to show that we support people for who they are. Uh, especially our children. Uh, many of who struggle with these issues. Uh, I read recently that twenty percent of all trans youngsters try to commit suicide in this country. So, you know, since government had a very big hand in discriminatory policies, I think it's important symbol that government shows that we're now welcoming, at least this government is now welcoming. And that, you know, we, to make America who America should be, we all have to have a seat at the table. No matter, you know, who we love or how we look or our economic background. And, uh, I think that this is a small step in, uh, making that happen. I just wanna read off the resolution and then, uh, you know, I know there's folks who wanna share about this and give them an opportunity to share about this. But just so everybody knows what the resolution is, uh, I will read it. It doesn't take that long. Whereas, all are welcome in the Village of Mamaroneck to live, work, play, and every family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by their friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas the village denounces prejudice and discrimination based upon age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical, physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month began in June of nineteen sixty-nine on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after the LGBTQ plus and allied friends rose and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ plus people inspire the community by celebrating authenticity, authenticity, acceptance and love. And whereas, the Village of Mamaroneck appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the LGBTQ plus community which strengthens our social fabric. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, sexual identity and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, community leaders, and institutions. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees declare the month of June twenty twenty-one as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the Village of Mamaroneck and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and actively promote the principles of equality. And be it therefore resolved to recognize and support our many citizens who are LGBTQ plus. The Village of Mamaroneck will raise the Pride flag over Village Hall at one sixty-nine Mount Pleasant Avenue for the month of June. And hopefully that will be in perpetuity in the month of June. So that is in sum and substance what we are doing here tonight. If anybody attending would like to, uh, comment, uh, please raise your hand. Ms. Finlay. All, please recognize Ms. Finlay.
Thank you, Mayor and mayors and members of the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to speak this evening. And thank you so much for the support that I have read and heard in this resolution. My name is Leslie Finlay and my family and I have lived in Mamaroneck for close to twenty years. This request to recognize June as Pride Month in our village and raising the Pride flag is a celebration of human rights, human rights that most of us take for granted. In nineteen sixty-four, our Congress passed the Civil Rights Act prohibiting discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. Provisions of this act forbade discrimination in hiring, promoting, and firing based on these criteria alone. Last June, less than one year ago, the U.S. Supreme Court issued a ruling saying Title VII of the Civil Rights Act protects gay and transgender workers from employment discrimination. This protection comes fifty-six years after the initial Civil Rights Act was passed. And despite this ruling, civil rights for the LGBTQ plus community continue to be threatened. I'd like to read an excerpt from an op-ed piece in the Rhine Neck High School Panther's Tale written by sophomore Lillian Schaub. She writes, "The LGBTQ community wants to be supported under the law and we are not asking for anything more. As an LGBTQ youth, it genuinely upsets me to realize that no matter how hard my elders fought for their rights, we are still not equal to our heterosexual counterparts. I wish those who do not support the LGBTQ community could step into our shoes so they could witness discrimination firsthand. People of the LGBT community are just as equal as any other human being and they have rights that sadly still need to be fought for." Well said, Lil. Well said. Rhine Neck Middle School has been awarded No Place For Hate by the Anti-Defamation League for the ninth year in a row. This is one more example of how our children are leading the way. We as adults need to catch up to them by doing the right thing and making our community and the world at large safe and affirming. Recognizing June as Pride Month in our village and raising the Pride flag sends a powerful message to our youth, to our families, friends, and neighbors who identify as LGBTQ that each of them is welcomed, loved, supported, equal, and protected. It sends an unequivocal message to all that the Village of Mamaroneck is striving to be its best, striving to create an environment void of hate and fear. We celebrate diversity and we are all the stronger because of it. Thank you very, very much.
And, uh, thank you, Ms. Finlay. Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else have their hand up? Ms. Stone?
I'm just so moved by all of you guys today. I can't even tell you, um, just from reading the resolution this morning to Kelly standing up and, um, bringing up the embassy to Nora, you know, extending it beyond twenty twenty-one, Dan clarifying, Tom advocating. I just really, I'm so appreciative and I'm just, I've never, I've never been prouder. I just wanna thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Queros. All right, you keep going and on. I do Mary Elizabeth Schwab.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm Mary Elizabeth Schwab. I live at 1517 Henry Avenue here in the village. My daughter is Lillian Schaub. She is the author of that op-ed that appeared in The Panther's Tale. She showed so much bravery in writing that in high school. I simply ask all of you to show the same bravery in supporting our youth. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Alana. Thank you, everyone else on this call. This is so important for our children to see that they're accepted no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing. Anybody else have their hand up? Louis Queros? Does Louis have his hand up? Get him. Keep going and on. Mr. Queros.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I have another topic to talk on, but right now on the issue of the of the, of this resolution, I found it a trend for a peacemaker. And I just want to clarify that it's not the government who created the diversity or created the racial conflict. It's people themselves before there was a government. And we are responsible for picking who the government is. So there is no escaping our role in the way those of us that are viewed as others, the, the, the all races, all religions, all of us that are viewed on the margins, which in social work and in social justice is known as the others. You know, which are the books that I write about and teach. Now, we all have a hand on this and as soon as we say the government has codified this, then you're, you're part of the problem. We are, we have a democracy. You said that last week. We are, we are the democracy or the lack of. If everybody within a government and a committee is made of the same race and class, there's no diversity, there's no democracy there. There's no democracy until there's diversity. Or you have a different names. And we have to start paying attention to this because the pain that our, our children are experiencing is the same pain that many of us when we were young and when I was their age and when I wrote things like this, that I was bullied and pained for being who I am. And it continues. So we are, each one of you is responsible for assuming that we have a democracy when we don't. And it's not the government. It is, it is us. And until we realize that it is us, we got major, major problems. We said to ourselves, there's no way I would have done this. And that finally said every time, every year that goes by, the youngsters that are now adults are saying the same thing. So I want to say that and, and I hope this doesn't disqualify me for another topic later on.
You're, you're, you're in, you're under the wire. No problem. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Short, yeah.
Hi, it's Hillary Short.
Hi, Hillary. Hillary, you muted yourself. Hillary, start again. Start again. I'm sorry.
Hillary Short. I live at 151 Fenimore Road in the Village of Mamaroneck. And I just want to say, I'm really impressed with Leslie and Mary for the work they've done on this and for working so hard on this really important issue. I have lived in several areas like I posted online. And I know a lot of, I have a lot of friends that are gay and I had a neighbor that was trans. And it's very, very tough because they never want to go home and lots of them to where they came from. And because of being different, not feeling part of it in their communities. And you know, I also worked, have worked for gay men that have children and they have to pick where they live so that their children feel accepted in the school systems, you know, because they have two dads or two moms. And this is part of the world we live in now. And I'm really proud to be a village resident and to see that we are taking this on board. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Alana, did you want to go again? All right. That wraps it up. Thank you for citizen participation. Anybody on the board have any comments?
I just, I actually, I just want to thank, you know, it's probably something we should have thought of ourselves. So I don't think we should take much credit for voting yes. You know, I think a great idea was brought to us and we're just supporting that good idea. And you know, as I said earlier, I think either we do this as a permanent thing or we will have this discussion every May. And maybe it's better to have the discussion every May.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I would be delighted to make the motion declaring June Pride Week in the Village of Mamaroneck and flying the flag of the Pride flag over Village Hall at 169 Mount Pleasant Avenue.
I think you mean Pride Month. You said Pride Week, but I know it was just.
I'm sorry, Pride Month. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Mr. Fusco. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Wintra?
Absolutely, yes.
Ashes?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Yes, and thank you to everyone who advocated for this. And thank you to the brave children in our community who so eloquently voiced their concerns and their experiences. Thank you all. Okay. One down, many to go. First item on the agenda is Presentations A. And Mr. Barbaria, you are up. This is MS4 report. What, Nora, you want to say?
I just want to say one thing. We made a mistake and there was supposed to be another presentation by four Mamaroneck High School students. So they're all here and I think they'll do their presentation at Communications to the Board.
Okay.
They'll be the first. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that.
They'll be the first call to Communications.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Barbaria.
Thanks, Mayor. If I can share my screen, I have a presentation that's part of the requirement of our MS4 report every year. So I'll provide that to the board. Very similar to last year's report in in May, except I want to start by saying that it was obviously a difficult year with the pandemic. A lot of construction was paused. And at times we had challenges doing inspections, although we didn't really have challenges doing outdoor inspections, but we did have issues with employees and other pandemic-related problems that this report is very different than in years past. Although we have some accomplishments and some achievements that I'll go to, I'll provide to the board at the very end. This presentation is very similar to last year's presentation, but as I said, is a requirement. So the, the MS4 report in the village is basically to comply with the Clean Water, the Federal Clean Water Act. And New York State monitors the discharge to waterways through what they call a state pollutant discharge elimination system permit program. Program requires that entities such as the village have specific permits, the specific requirements, while other entities are covered under general permits and so, and, and set requirements. As a municipality, we meet a certain population size and have a storm sewer system separate from our sanitary sewer system. In New York State, we automatically, the state automatically regulates us through what they call the Municipal New York State General Permit or MS4. And we are required to complete an annual report regarding the MS4, the stormwater system. The D E C requires that we report six topics and what they call control measures, measures as part of our general permit. Public education and outreach is the first. Public participation and involvement is the second. In both of these items, it was very difficult during a worldwide pandemic to achieve these control measures, but we did in some regard use some very creative ideas to, to, to accomplish that. But of course, we were unable to meet as we, as we have in the past for our clean and green events and other events such as visiting the schools and providing, providing outreach opportunities to the community. The number three and number four is illicit discharge detection and elimination. Number four is construction site runoff control. As far as construction site runoff control, the idea is to develop, implement, and enforce an erosion and sediment control program for construction activities. As I said, there were very few construction, very, very little construction going on during the pandemic because there was a lot of issues with holding off based on, on the governor's regulations, holding off assembling employees and, and workers. So it was, it was very difficult during, during the pandemic. And so what you'll see is less activity this year than you would normally see in the past. Number five and six, post-construction runoff control. The MS4 report reports that stormwater controls, including preventive actions, protecting sensitive areas and the use of structural controls, such as whales and pervious pavement are inventoried and then inspected when needed. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The report discusses that the prevention and reduction of pollutant runoff from municipal operations. And that's really in part why we train municipal staff on pollution prevention measures and also keeping an eye out for those kinds of issues. In control measure, number one, public education and outreach. Our goal was to continue to post information and videos on our website and distribute printed material. Obviously, we did not have a connection with the schools since schools went to a, a, a remote. All the kids were at home. We did have success, however, when our Marine Education Center leader, naturalist Kyle Troy, developed a series of videos for the students at the schools as well as everyone who's the students who would normally go to the schools, who are all at home. And during those videos that she created along with LMCTV, we had over 9,000 views. Obviously, the current goal and this year's goal is to continue to get back to, to normal or whatever the new normal is and provide activities, outdoor activities, and potentially hopefully increase those as well. Control measure number two is public involvement. We did not have a clean and green event this year. But we hope, I'm sorry, we didn't have one last year. We did have one this year. So I'm, I'll be able to report in next year's MS4 report presentation that we had, I believe, almost 2,000 people participate in total, which is probably the largest we've ever had. And this is a picture of Kyle Troy before the pandemic, visiting one of our schools. He doesn't know I'm using this picture, so I will get an email later today. Number three, illicit discharge detection. The goal is to continue to investigate illicit discharge, inspect outfalls, and update the record-keeping with software. We've been talking about software for a long time. Staff is ready to move forward with a presentation to the board to upgrade our current software and include additional modules that will help us do this. We also did go out to bid and, and we awarded to Arcadis a new investigation contract where we would investigate illicit discharge. We've already started that. We started that in April. And we'll continue to investigate any reported suspected illicit discharges through our building department, principally Dennis, Charlotte, Tom, and Kevin. Do that for us. Number four is construction site runoff control. Obviously, we weren't able to make any headway in this because of the pandemic, because we had our priority shift. We really had to focus on the, the health and well-being of the staff as well as the public and all sorts of extra work that the pandemic required municipalities to do. But our current goal is to upgrade the proper software program that fits our needs and revise the code to help us maintain better records and streamline this process. Five is post-construction stormwater management. Construction practices usually are monitored by the village engineer. We don't have a village engineer. We have a consulting engineer. And as I said before, building department staff really helps us with that. The software, again, once we upgrade to a reliable software program and package, I think we'll be able to do a much better job with this. So software will be a focus as we come out of this pandemic to be able to upgrade our current system and help us with the, with this control measure as well as others. Number six is what you see on the road. You'll see our staff maintaining catch basins. Several years ago, we set a goal to clean 300 catch basins annually. Last year, we were able to, two years ago, we were able to, to exceed that by 150, more or less. This year, we almost made our goal. We cleaned 291 catch basins. Obviously, Public Works, Sewer Division, along with the police, fire, park, had many other responsibilities, including making sure we keep our employees safe during the pandemic. They were incredible and outstanding. And so to achieve almost 300 catch basin cleanings is a feat in itself. So obviously, we have the equipment. This is a picture of our truck that we purchased two years ago. It's already two years old. And so we'll continue to clean catch basins and work on items regarding this control measure. This is the final slide. Some of the highlights from this year, as I mentioned, in control measure one and two, public education and outreach, through the creativity of Kyle Troy, our naturalist, we were able to reach 9,100 views. I can't specifically say we reached 9,100 people because I'm sure that several of them viewed it more than once. But we did go above and beyond to create the, the series that's on our website, on the M E C website, as well as you can find it on the, on the L M C websites. We outperformed our target of 25 annual outfall inspections. I believe we did 28 last year, so three years in a row now. We've, we've gone above our target of 25 per year. Catch basins, as I mentioned, we cleaned 291 catch basins during the pandemic. Some primary achievements. With the leadership of our DPW General Foreman, Tony Acavelli, he held two training sessions in, in 2020. Actually, I think the last one that he had was late, late, early, early December. So 31 additional DPW and Sewer Division employees were trained in stormwater awareness and management. And that is the first time since I've been here that we've trained additional staff. So thanks to Tony, he set up the break room at Public Works on Fayette with With presentation materials, we provided, I provided him the videos and the documentation and he was able to. To train staff. And so I, I think that was a great initiative and I thank him for that. I want to mention to the board that our twenty twenty MS four report was successfully submitted before June one of twenty twenty last year. The state had indicated that they would extend the deadline. The deadline is June one. But we were able to submit it before June one. The D C central office acknowledged the receipt and nothing, not even one negative comment or correction. Was forwarded to the village from the MS four permit coordinator, which means that. Yeah, they accepted, they accepted our, our, our report and they didn't have any issues or problems. So that's it, Mayor. That's all we have.
Thank you, Jerry. I've made a board of any questions or concerns. Jerry, stop sharing the screen if you can. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Board questions, concerns?
I know this is a major undertaking every year, Jerry. It's a lot of work. And even though our flood committee hasn't been meeting this year, I know they would be happy to hear that the vacuum truck is being well used. And I just, you know, thank you for all the work that went into this. I know it was a lot.
Sure. No, it's, it's the staff. I get to put the report together and at the end of the year. Reporting year, find out all the work they did. And so it's great to be able to demonstrate the totals. Of, of the hard work they come in every morning and do every day. I did have a couple of comments from trustee to four, which I was able to respond earlier today. With the assistance of, of Charlotte Mountain, our code enforcement officer. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mister Teager has his hand up.
Sorry, I'm muted. Good evening. Thank you for doing the report. I want to go back to last year shortly before you did the presentation last year. Trustee to four responded to your email saying you weren't going to do the presentation. At the public meeting and he provided you. Basically, the excerpts from. The Speedy's general permit on the requirements of the annual report. One of those requirements is to receive comments and questions from the public. Another one of those requirements is in that year's report or the following year's report. To include a summary of the comments and responses. From the village. I don't see those in this year's report in response to my questions and comments. A number of them were about. What I believe are correctly pointed out are mistakes in the reporting. That have been repeated again this year. So I hope you will look at those and include them in the final report as the Speedy's permit required. I'd like to discuss a few of the records that were provided. I'm unclear why some of them were provided. First one I want to discuss are two of them. It's the catch basins clean. And the applicator technician pesticide annual report. Which I believe is the village's report to the Department of Environmental Conservation. About the use of pesticides and herbicides during the reporting year. On that list, let me just comment first that. If trustee to four were here, I think he would corroborate that the. Our Speedy's permit and our MS four program is based on public participation and involvement. D C recognized that that was the only way they would get. Improved order quality. So I understand the mayor's put a limit on how long people can speak. But I would hope instead of cutting me off this year, you listen to the full comments.
The rules apply evenly, so the rules will apply to you evenly as they apply to everyone else.
All right. Do you have a question, Mayor?
No, I'm just, I'm clarifying for you that the rules apply to everyone and yourself included. I know you usually don't like the rules.
Right, but Mayor, you regularly let folks you like. So I, you know, you can certainly apply, Mayor, if I have the floor.
Stop it. Just continue with your rant and stop it.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm providing you with information about.
Then do it, but do it in a time allowed, like everybody else.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I have informed you that at the last two meetings, you let folks speak well over. Your limited time. So if you want to limit me differently. Please stop interrupting me. I will finish my comments and you can cut me off whenever you want.
Even if the courts don't limit you, but go ahead.
Are you finished?
Keep talking.
So there are the list of catch basins cleaned and there is the report to the D E C. Which reports only on larvicide use, both in. The Otter Creek Preserve and in catch base. I'm not sure this report is accurate. The dates for doing the larvicide in Otter Creeks don't seem to coincide. With what would be best management practices for this work, which I'm sure Mister Barbario is aware of. And the other comment is that of the, I think almost four hundred catch basins clean. Hundred ninety-five of them were cleaned after the larvicide was put into the catch basin. And I see no indication that. It was reapplied after that. So I would hope this year we would try and get our catch basins cleaned prior to. The. Larvicide being put in the base.
Two minutes.
For some reason, there seem to be some very extraneous records placed in as backup. And I'm not sure why they were for some reason, the two thousand and six D D I S. For the Mason Development is in the backup records. I'm not sure what relevance that has to stormwater management. Certainly has some relevance to flooding as Miss Winster noted. In that, that development increased the risk of flooding in. There's also, I'm sorry, I'm going to go through the report. I've asked for records that clearly haven't been provided. Wondering if. I'll hear my questions for this evening. And which should be answered in the report. What schools and universities were inspected? What food processing facilities were inspected? The, on page three, I'm sorry, on M C M three, page two of four. The village responds that each sewer shed mapping has been completed. As I pointed out last year, that's not true. That's been acknowledged by the previous village engineer, but never corrected. I would hope that the village might correct the mapping. It's an important part of stormwater management. M C M three, page three of four. The question is asked, what percent of staff in relevant positions and departments? Has received I D E training? And the answer is a hundred percent. I asked last year, what are considered relevant positions? On page. M C M four slash five, page one of two. Questions asked, does your MS four have a mechanism for receipt and consideration of public comments? Related to construction SWIP. I asked last year, the, the answer given is yes, I'm unaware of what that process is. Or the SWIPs that never get to. A landing. Page M C M four, page three of three. The village has answered that the measurable goal identified in this S W M. P P for this reporting period is revisions the current local stormwater code. Utilizing software to track. There's a typo elements of it. I just want to point out to the board that as long as every member of this boards and on there. The village attorney, as I understand it, has been working on a rewrite of stormwater, the stormwater law. It's readily acknowledged that our stormwater wall law is unworkable. So maybe this year, instead of just putting it down as a aspirational goal. The trustees will actually turn their attention to creating some semblance of a workable stormwater management law. So under M C M five. Which is post-construction inspections. The village answers, as we resume normal operations, we will also resume inspections of post-construction practice. I've written this board. Based on foil responses to the village, the village has never, ever done. An inspection of a boat, a post-construction inspection of a stormwater manager. So I would just suggest it's disingenuous to each year, say, we're going to resume this. Or we're going to continue doing this when we've never, ever done. And the stormwater design manual says these systems, it's a responsibility of the property owner. It's not even the village's responsibility. But it, it should be done at some point. We've been doing these things for ten years. As far as I know, we don't even have a comprehensive record of where they are. So that may be something managers office wants. Page M C M five, page three of three F. There's a question briefly summarize the stormwater activities planned to meet the goals of this M C M during the next reporting cycle. There's no answer. So I, I would guess that was an omission. Can you briefly explain? What, how the D P W, the, the men that were trained. How they're going to be utilized and improving stormwater? I think that would be an interesting. Topic for the public to, it might generate. Some interest. I guess that's it. But again. Public involvement is. Fundamental to the MS four program. I've asked these questions for three years now. They don't get responded to. They don't get fixed. The obvious problems. So I hope this year it'll be different.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Teager. You've had over twice the time limit.
Oh, thanks for counting, Mayor.
Thank you. Mister Queiroz has his hand up. Mister Queiroz, this is on the MS four report.
No, I have my hand up and not on that.
Okay, then we, let's go on what we're doing. Okay. The next item we're going to take is. The, with the first communications award are going to be the children from the high school who was supposed to do a presentation. But it didn't get on the agenda. So we're going to give them, we're going to give them more time because there's four of them. And their presentation was inadvertently left off the agenda. So who, Nora, do you know who the leader is of this cabal? Give me your mute, Nora, your mute.
It may be Justin Solis who's going to start off and they sent the presentation to Sally and to Cliff and to Augie.
Okay, Mister Solis. Mister Solis, you want to put up your hand?
Should we promote them to panelists or?
So it's, it's Justin, Daniel, Olivia. And Jackson.
Just so folks know, th- these young folks have been working on a proposal to lengthen. Elected terms to four years instead of two and to move the elections into even numbered years. They were supposed to be on the agenda to do a presentation and they showed up here and we, we inadvertently left them off. So we're going to give them. A shot at. Presenting to us now. Who wants to start? Mister Solis?
I, I just like, I think we'd all like to thank the board for accommodating us like this. It's been a long time coming. And as I'm sure you all know, we presented to everyone individually and it's just a big honor to finally be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackson.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Okay, so hi, I'm Olivia. And Jack, this is Jackson, Nina, Daniel and Justin's presentation. We are students of Amerenic High School and we are part of, of Amerenic High School's Original Civics Research and Action Program. Which helps to create civic entrepreneurs and solve local issues. And this is our presentation on aligning local elections with federal elections.
So just some background before we start. Elections in the village of Amerenic and Larchmont are currently held on the first Tuesday, following the first Monday of November each year. And they're currently elected in two groups. So in group one, three trustees are elected every two years. And in group two, the mayor and one trustee are elected every two years on odd numbered years.
Here is just a breakdown how this actually looks. So the odd numbered election years, we got one trustee slot. Minimum two candidate, or usually two candidates. Even your elections, we have three trustee slots and, you know, usually six candidates, sometimes three candidates. So the main challenge local elections in the village from Amerenic face today is voter engagement. As you can all see, we've updated our data to include non-affiliated registered voters and. When you see the, like, the number of registered voters increased by factoring in these non-affiliated voters. The issue becomes even more severe. So particularly in odd numbered elections, election years, which will refer to as off-cycle elections because of their non-alignment with federal cycles. And on, in these odd numbered years, even the active registered voters, people who are voting in other elections and are marked as active by the board of elections. Turn out at low rates. In fact, less than twenty-five percent of these voters participate in off-cycle election years. We feel this is a problem because these are people who vote regularly, but neglect local races because they're in off-cycle years. We would argue this fosters lower civic engagement in our local political system, which is bad for democracy. We would argue this fosters lower civic engagement in our local political system, which is bad for democracy. So if you look at the Bill Jimmy Maranic voter turnout data from 2010 to 2020. This, looking at the bar graph alone, which, as you can see, the green bars represent on cycle election years, so 2010, 2012, 2014. And the purple bars represent off cycle election years, which is our those odd numbered years like 2011, 2013, 2015. Even visually, you can just see that. The green bars are a lot higher in turnout, a lot more votes being cast in these even numbered years than the purple bars. But if you look deeper at the data. Go to the next slide. Based on our calculations, we see that on average, there's, there's a roughly a 37% increase in turnout. For these even numbered election years versus these odd numbered election years. And also a 10% further engagement of these registered voters I was talking about earlier. Who are voting in other elections but just aren't voting in local elections. So we feel that if. That these even numbered elections capture more of these voters because all they have to do is move further down ballot to vote for their trustee or their mayor.
So we feel that this lack of voter engagement generates a pretty big problem. We think that democracy works at its best when more people turn out and are engaged in the process. So our proposal to fix. This problem of low voter engagement is to lengthen term length. And also to align a local election so that they are held concurrently with state and national elections. So maintaining the two group system that already exists. We would extend temporarily the term lengths of the incumbents in group A to three years so that they could get aligned on cycle. And then the winners of the elections in November of 2021 would have. Serving would serve three year terms and then in 2024, the winners of those elections would serve four year terms. And then for group B, their first election in this new system would be November of 2022. And then the winners of those elections would have their terms be four years, so then it would go on to 2026 and so on.
So we also have legal justification for this project. So section three dash three oh two to seven point seven of New York State Village Law. Says that through referendum, the trustees of any village can change the election date to even numbered years. As well as section three dash three oh two sub point five, which says that the terms of elected officials can be extended to four years.
So there are actually three examples of our project being implemented in major American cities and. In every single example, turnout has increased by significant margin.
So our first example is in Baltimore. In 2016, Baltimore's municipal elections were aligned with the national general election. And in the 2003 election in September was postponed to November 2004 because of a clash between Maryland State Election Law and the Baltimore City Charter. As you can see by the calculations on the bottom right, Baltimore's turnout for elections in on cycle years was 3.0 times higher than the off cycle election years.
Um, in the example of Austin, in 2014, municipal elections were aligned with national midterm elections. And just for reference, the 2006 and 2012 elections cannot be evaluated as on cycle elections because they took place in May, obviously not the November election. For like president or. Congress. So again, you can see based on the calculations that turnout for elections on cycle on average was 3.3 times higher than it was in off cycle.
So our final empirical example is Phoenix, Arizona. 2018 was the first election in which their local elections were aligned with state and federal elections and the turnout increased pretty substantially. The average turnout in off cycle elections was around 100, 107,000, while for on cycle elections, it was 410,000, which is nearly a 4% or a four. Times higher for on cycle elections and off cycle elections. So we think that these three empirical examples. Pose pretty significant evidence that aligning elections would increase voter turnout. Outside of these examples, we have some other evidence that supports our case. So in a nationwide poll conducted a few years ago found that 70% of voters favored moving local elections to line up with larger elections. There's also an analysis done of a few thousand municipal elections in the state of California and it found that turnout was 25 to 36% higher. In elections that were held concurrently with state and federal ones. There's also been a nationwide trend towards aligning elections. So in the last five years, California, Kansas and Michigan have all taken steps to line up their elections. And only a month or so ago, the state of Virginia also aligned their aligned their elections. So we have some other evidence, not that not just with this increased voter turnout, but it also increased or decreased the cost. Both to the municipalities running the elections and the voters participating in them. So since elections would be held. Less frequently, the voters wouldn't have to go to the polls as much and the election administrators wouldn't have to hold as many elections.
So just, we thought we would conduct some research anticipating some possible concerns with our proposal. So I guess here they are.
So a possible opposition to this proposal could be how the Republicans in the village of Amerenic are impacted. And as you can see from the graphs on this slide, the Republicans' margin of victory, how much they won or lost by only suffered a negative 3% change in the on cycle election years compared to the off cycle elections. This is very small considering, this is a very small margin considering how the Republicans have half as many registered voters in the village of Amerenic.
Um, another concern is that voters will simply vote for federal candidates and neglect the local, the local races in federal election years. Our analysis of comparing presidential turnout with local turnout in the 2012 and 2016 election years shows that roughly 87% of federal turnout spills over to local elections. So. But yeah, the calculations are here on the right. Just based on these two presidential election years, that's a pretty significant margin, we would argue. That is carried over, if you will, from these presidential elections. So on that note, actually, another concern. Is that it will increase purely partisan voting where, you know, these voters in these presidential elections or midterm elections will simply vote along the party line and not analyze. Candidates' positions or anything like that. So while this concern is qualitative in nature, we did our best to prove some degree of split ticking voting in on cycle elections. So. First, we looked back at 2012, the midterm race. So we compared Democratic and Republican votes for Congress. In the 16th district with the Republican and Democratic votes for trustee in these districts. And we found that roughly 247 voters of this electorate. Split tickets in that they voted Democrat in the congressional race but voted Republican locally or vice versa. So this is roughly 7% of the Democrats voting in the 2012 congressional elections who are switching tickets in their local election, demonstrating some degree of engagement. So we also apply this to the 2016 and 2012 election, which I'll get to in the next slide. But basically, our methodology behind our calculations was, we first gathered the amount of Democratic votes cast for president. Then we adjusted the number for the average percentage of voters from the last slide that vote in both local and federal elections, so 87%. So that split ticket voting cannot be alternatively explained away by voters simply not voting, right? So like people just not voting in these elections. After this, we took this adjusted number and divided trustee turnout by it. Giving us the percentage of voters who voted Democrat in both the presidential race and the local election. Then we simply subtracted this number from one to get the percentage of Democrat voters in 2016 who only voted Democrat in the presidential election. But decided to vote Republican or other in the local election. So in 2016, it's um. There's roughly, there's a 13% margin of Democrats who voted in the 2016 presidential election and then switched tickets to vote for a Republican local candidate in the trustee election. Now, if we go to the next slide. In 2012. We see a similar margin, 16% of the Democrats voting in the 2012 presidential election switched tickets in the local election. Now, we would say this proves that there is consistently some degree of differentiation between local and national races when voters make their decision. And that voters are voting differently between national and local races. Just for reference, the 2020 election cannot be used because there is no Republican opposition in the local race.
And the last concern is if people will run for four year terms. So the extension of the term length might appear as if it would dissuade the population from running for four year terms. But our analysis shows that a large proportion of village trustees have sought for your terms despite two year term lengths. And as the data shows, 17 out of 23 village trustees have run for second two year term, resulting in 73.9% of village trustees seeking a four year commitment.
So overall, while the idea of four year terms can seem like a huge change, the neighboring town of Amerenic and in fact, all towns in New York State by law have four year terms for their board members. In this case, we believe that all bent, all the benefits outweigh the possible criticisms. Not only are four year terms much more cost efficient, but they also can help make a much more efficient government with officials who have really gotten the hang of their positions. As seen from the quote by Abby Katz, a town official in the town of Amerenic, we can see that there are many to benefits of a town board that has been there for four years.
So in conclusion, our project increases government accountability by increasing the amount of people voting in village elections. We believe that a village that has more people voting is a village that has a board more representative of Amerenic residents' interests. In addition to simply increasing turnout, our project removes the less convenient odd numbered election years. Thus allowing for more discourse during a conventional election year about candidates' values and solutions to the villages' problems. This encourages candidates to develop the best proposals and to best address voters' problems. Our project is a further step towards principles of good government and broad representation.
Our reducing expenditures, our project ensures that the funds appropriated in our government are used efficiently. While the money saved by our proposal isn't a massive amount, it is by no means insignificant symbolically. An efficient political system is a trusted political system, and we believe our project can enhance the image of the village in this area.
As our testimony, testimony from the town of Amerenic officials shows, local officials with four year terms are much more able to realize their desired policies than officials burdened by an election every two years. Not only would our initiative help to increase cohesiveness and expertise of board members, but it would also help officials take on important projects that will take much longer than two years.
Finally, our project makes it easier for voters to participate in and follow village elections because of their congruence with more publicized federal elections. Voters who are already voting in presidential or midterm elections simply have to move their pen down to participate in otherwise separate local elections. We believe this is a prerequisite for a competitive and democratic electoral process that will enhance both the effectiveness and accountability of government. Thank you very much for your time and we hope this comes under further debate.
Okay, you know, I. Am I muted? Nope. Thank you very much, guys. Please stay on the screen. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions if you can stop sharing the screen. Now. Do in anyone who knows the answer can just unmute themselves. Do you know if? We can pass, and it's all it's required is the village board to pass a law. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, but in in addition, the village can pass. The, as I'm sure, as a, actually, as a trustee Lucas pointed out. A week ago about, the board can also. Pass the local law but only have it be made effective after a referendum.
Yes, right. We could do that, but we could just pass a local law too.
Yeah, you could also do that.
Okay, because what what could happen then is if people are really opposed to it, they can petition for a permissive referendum. So I mean, part of my concern on a personal level is that I am running on a post. For my third term in the village of Amerenic. So, you know, unless there was an amazing write in campaign, I'm going to get elected. In November to a two year term, another two year term that'll make six years. If we adopt your proposal. That would mean I would have seven consecutive years, a three year term. This term, the term I'm getting elected to will become a three year term. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then if I ran for reelection again, that would be a four year term.
Yes.
So the mayor and trustee Lucas's position. Would then be a four year term in a presidential election year election. Now, I'm pointing this out and let me, let me finish it. I was pointing this out because presidential elections are always. The best elections for Democrats. So I think you've got a good idea. And I think it is good for the community. But I think for me, it gives me an unfair advantage. So what I will say here is that if this Board of Trustees does this and. What I will do is I will just serve the next three years and I will not run for a four year term after that. Because I think 11 years is too much for one person and it's, it's too much, the community needs change after seven years. So if the board decides that that's a good idea, I'm going to say here tonight that I'm not going to run for reelection in the presidential election year. Because frankly, I've had enough and it'll be somebody else's turn and I don't think it's fair. For me to do that, going into that would be such a huge advantage. Because I I know how on the underground, kind of how campaigns work in the village of Amerenic. And I know that, you know, Democrats running in a presidential election year have a leg up and that's just. You know, I I understand it's a deviation, you pointed that out, but Democrats are going to win in a presidential election. So I I'll just say for myself and and right now I would vote for this, but I will not run. If somebody's saying I'm trying to, you know, create. You know, a situation where I'll always be in office, it's not my plan in life and I will not run in a presidential election. But I have one anecdote that I want to tell you for this. I sat for your story, you got to sit for mine. In 2008, I ran for reelection. And one, and I can't wait to meet President Obama someday because him and I were on the same line, right? And I got more votes to him in the village of Amerenic and I'm going to bring that up to him. Because it's it's like the only thing I'm ever going to have over that guy. He'll point out to me, well, you know, Tom, I was a leader of the free world, but I did beat him in Amerenic Obama. So that 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 is, you know, the only thing I'm proud about in that election. But I I think it's a good idea. I think you guys have made a good case. We'll see what the board wants to do. I I with the caveat that I gave you, I I would be supportive of it. And hold me too, because you'll all be old enough to run for mayor at that time. Anybody in the board?
Well, I just want to say I think that they've done a really good job. I think it's, you know, I think it's, I think it is a really good idea. I think it would, if we're going to do it, I think we should do it and do it in a timeframe so that we have the referendum as part of it. Because a permissive referendum involves getting a tremendous number of signatures in 30 days. I think that's a pretty big hurdle. So I think it would be good to do and have it on the ballot in November.
Just let me ask a question, Mr. Spolzino. Can you appear? What's the timeframe for getting something on the ballot in November?
I'm sorry, Mayor, the timeframe? The timeframe for, it's the timeframe for passing a local law. And getting on the, getting on the ballot is, you know, end of August, early September.
I think, I actually think with a new, I think it's earlier now because of early voting. I think we have to do it early August.
I can check the dates.
Okay, so we would have to pass the law in the next, what? Couple of months? Kelly, go ahead.
And the law could be subject to a permissive referendum.
No, it's is subject to a referendum. If we pass a law subject to a permissive referendum, then. We would not be able to do it for probably this November because there's a 30 day time clock for getting the signatures. Whereas we could pass it subject to a referendum and it would be on the ballot in November if we did it early enough. I think it's too tight a timeframe to do it by permissive referendum this year.
I don't know. I I think what Kelly's saying is that the referendum would be, so if 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 we pass a law that it is a permissive refer. that, it, it is a permissive referendum, but it is not a mandatory referendum.
Right.
If, if we pass a law for a permissive, that allows for a referendum that gives permission to do this. If, if we put that in our law, then Laura, Nora, that, that negates the need for people to get signatures.
Right, but I, I, but what I, what I've thought about, and I've just thought about it today, is that if we were to pass the law and not self-require a referendum, I don't, you know, I don't know, I think we'd have to, there has to be enough time for those thirty days for voters, for registered voters to get the whatever, just ten or twenty percent of the eligible voters to sign. So I think that might change, you know, we might not be able to do it for two thousand twenty-one, it would have to be twenty twenty-two, because you have to factor in that thirty days for the permissive, for the signatures, and then there has to be enough time for the Board of Elections to get it on the ballot.
Ellie?
Well, what I'm actually asking is, is, because I'm, I'm sensitive to the idea of an all-democratic board rushing to pass a local law and having a referendum this November, which which is an odd-numbered year when Democrats do get more voters. What I'm wondering is twofold, whether we could have the referendum first, so whether there could be a petition, a grassroots movement, and gathering petition signatures to put this on the ballot and have the voters speak about this with the, you know, and we could speak publicly that we would support what the voters want on this, and we could speak on our own views about the issue, but put it before the voters first. That's, that's really what I'm asking, because that seems fairer, because I, I just, I'm concerned that as an all-democratic board, we're not hearing from Republicans, we're not hearing from conservatives, we're not hearing, and I would certainly want to engage them in the process of passing such a law, but I think it might be more democratic to do this in, by, by petition first, put it on the ballot first.
I think what we would have to do is, we, we have to adopt a local law. The local law could take effect in two thousand twenty-two after a referendum.
Okay, can I just? I, I think, and Bob, you know, check me on this, okay? I think that we can pass a local law with a referendum in it. And the referendum, if passed, would allow Nora and I to serve for three years. And then would allow the, the trustees term, you know, as these young people have put it in their thing. So if the local law fails in the referendum, then it goes back to status quo.
Right, yes.
So i- i- if in November the, the referendum passes the voters, then Nora and I serve a three-year term starting in December of this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's how, that is how it would work if we require a referendum as part of the local law.
And, and, yes, and then, and if that passes in twenty-two, the three, three trustees will run for a four-year term.
Yes.
Bob, does that make sense to you?
I believe that's correct, yes. I'll have to get back.
Could you just check that with the, the books behind you in the, in between now and the next meeting?
I can.
Or in the alternative, there could be something put on the ballot by the citizenry by petition, not involving the Board of Trustees, that would make this become, you know, that they could make it effective, or could, you know, we could have the results of that before it comes before the board, and we could vote on it after the election, and it could all become effective, you know, starting the following year. But following the voice of the people is what I'm saying.
I hear you, but I think the people get the choice in November of whether to do it or not. Because, you know, we, we're asking people to on their own get, you know, ten percent of signatures at a village of Mamaroneck, that's a thousand signatures.
I think, and I think it might be more than ten percent. But, and a third option would be to pass a law, but have the referendum be in two thousand twenty-two.
What if it fails? I mean, I've made plans.
Okay, well. Unmake them. My concern about doing it without a referendum is that it doesn't give, because of this new election cycle, or, and, and early voting, instead of having stuff ready for a referendum, instead of having information of the Board of Elections by like September, it has to be done end of July, early August. So it wouldn't give people enough time to get the signatures to require the permissive referendum. So it seems as though instead of making people go to the effort of getting signatures, we just
We're doing the work for them.
Do the work for them. If we're gonna do it, I just think that's something we should really consider.
Yep.
You have an opinion on it?
I think it's a very good idea. Something that needs to be really refreshed out.
Okay. I'll add this to the work session. Thank you, high schoolers for all this work. Please stay involved. Now, you, you juniors, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll probably be taking AP Gov next year, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much for your hard work. Hopefully, there, there'll be some movement on this.
Yeah, well, if it's on, you keep checking for our agenda, because you can come testify.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, good night, guys.
Sorry for the snafu about not getting.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you for doing a good presentation. You've done this a lot. You're getting better with every, with every whatever roll of the dice.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, guys. Have a good night. The next item is communication to the board. I see two folks with their hands up. Let's go to Mr. Queros and then Mr. Glenn.
Hi, Luke Queros again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good. And we connect all the dots for all these meetings, all these sessions that we've had since seven-thirty. It, the, the name, the issue of transparency and the voice and voter oppression appears a lot. These high schoolers did a great job. It certainly has a lot to do with getting more transparency, more of a diversified voter turnout, which would diversify the board. Because I have always said, and I've, again, I've written this in books, because it's a very political and an important paramount topic on how this village, Mary, and how this village of Mamaroneck and a lot of very, very wealthy ones are controlled through gentleman agreements. And because of their lack of diversity in the committees and on boards, even though there could be two different political parties, the, what is wanted is privately voted for already behind, behind the tables. It's all a gentleman's agreement. When you say, when you said, Tom, that you, in two thousand eight, you outvoted Obama, it's one of the one of the pieces of the puzzle that proves my point about the privacy that even public, the harbor, all these committees, they're all really privately held by individuals that control the voice, that control the power within the organizations. You, you outvoted Obama, if it's true, in two thousand eight, because very powerful black leaders in the, in, in the in the, in this county that served on boards and are black, some passed away, voted for Hillary over Obama, because they wanted Hillary in there. And I was amazed as I would walk around, because I was also chairman of the Board of West cop, if you don't recall, for a few years, black people on the board had a pin for Hillary. But when Obama won, they all cried, many cried, saying, I finally get to see a black person as president, and I would tell them, no thanks to you. What we have here and what has to be unraveled is the transparency of what is going on, especially when it comes to documents that are never revealed. I'm still waiting for the Goldstein documents to appear on the website. They're not there, and the lack of transparency also, also. Let me finish, okay? That the Goldstein documents are, are not on the website, though her family have given a lot of political donations for your running, for your winning, Tom, you know, which is part of the go-back-to-the-high-school students, which is why we need different, we need to break up this mob, and, you know, the lack of time without, I don't want to go on forever, but really is a gentleman's agreement that a handful of people control the harbor, control the wealth, control everything in this community, and then the boards, the government boards try to figure out how to ways, how to make it melt, so, so it doesn't become so obvious, unless you're a student of political science, or you're a professor, or you're really, this is what you do in order to break the transparency. But, but, but certainly, a donation by Goldstein, for example, and the ethics problems that she has created have been protected, and, and, and I wonder if you had anything to do with there is the harbor or whether it is where we want to, where some more money from real estate development has to come in from the selling of, of, of property so we can build. We are, and I say we, because we're not winning this, and we gotta keep fighting this. We're not winning where a lot of people can live, can afford to live here. And these policies that are being made are being made to the advantage of a few. And again, it goes back to the view of others. You talk about how we got pride, you know, gay pride, all this pride, a lot of pride going around. But you guys are controlling what should happen in this village. You're controlling zoning laws, you're, you're controlling everything that paramount for having small people, us others live here. And that's part of the, that's, that's a major problem in this village, and you're doing a great job in hiding it, except some of us wants, you know, can't stand for it.
Okay, Mr. Queros, sir, your, your, your time is up, but I just do want to inform you that the ethics decision is on the page, the Goldstein Ethics Decision is on the page. And I can assure you
Did you receive donations from the Goldstein?
That Ms. Goldstein is not a supporter of mine. I can assure you that. From a lot of people over the years, Mr. Queros, at one point, my sign, my village reelection sign was on your lawn. So, you know, the, the, to, to say that I'm controlled by anyone else is just, you know, it's obviously patently ridiculous to anybody who knows me, but your time is up, and I appreciate your comments. Glenn is up next.
Good evening, board. Number one, just to comment on the presentation by the high schoolers. I am rather disappointed with this board. With one presentation, all of a sudden, happy days, we want to go to four years. The idea behind two-year terms, both in the House of Representatives on the, on the local level, is that we have the people's representatives that react over two years to the will of the people. And the idea of having two-year boards, a board changing constantly, is that the board has to address the need to the community, or they get voted out immediately. If a board, if a board goes too far one way or the other, and that has happened in this village, they're quickly removed. The other thing is you're discouraging citizen politicians, because instead of having to make a two-year commitment, you're now forcing local people to make a four-year commitment, where maybe somebody who is a insurance agent, or a real estate person, or a business person says, hey, I can go on the board, I can make a difference for two years, to make a four-year commitment is a much greater commitment. As for some of the statistics they put out there, I have to look further into them. But understand, when you talk about Republicans voting for Democrats, Democrats reporting for Republicans, when, of, of some of these elections, you have judges that run on both lines. Those statistics can be skewed. For the most part, people vote party-wise. There are more Democrats than Republicans in the village of Mamaroneck. That's a fact. At this point, I don't think it makes a difference if it's off-election, on-election. But every four years, we do have an election that takes place during the presidential election. Every two years, we have an election that takes, during the midterm elections, and then we have two other terms that are off-year elections. But it's not like we don't have an election every single presidential election. So before you go jumping for the four years, just remember, the reason that the House of Representatives was set up for two years is the people's house. One of the reasons that the local government was two years is to be much more reactive on the street level, on the bottom level, to your local citizenry. And that's why you have two-year terms in the House of most state senates, in, in most you have a state senate, and you have a state assembly. That's why you have, you know, different levels of government. Town is a higher level of government, public government, two years. You're there to react to the needs and wants of the people, and the people get to make that decision on you every two years. Your work session, you were talking about the capital budget. What I see lacking in the capital budget right now is, yes, you have a priority list. Yes, you, you have gone over what you can do. The next step is, on that priority list, you have priority one for different departments. What is the number one project you're going to do, and how are you going to pay for it? You have not addressed the capital budget of how you are going to pay for items. You already have one point seven million dollars worth of items that have to be bonded. They're done. That, those projects are done. They are waiting to be bonded next year. You have one point four million dollars worth of projects that have just come up that aren't on the capital list. What should have been done as those items came up is the, the different departments head should have said, hey, Jerry, we have a problem with a roof over here, and then Jerry simply informs you and puts it as part of the capital budget. Hey, this is the capital budget. The capital budget should be a living form. It constantly needs to be updated, and then you have to look and say, well, does this now take priority over something else that we already have? Or do we need to do both projects, and how do we pay for it? As of right now, you have borrowed six hundred thousand dollars for your operating budget this week, this year. For every million, uh, three million dollars you spend, that goes towards eighty thousand dollars in your operating expense the following year. So if you spend four million dollars, that's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, Mr. Tippett.
The fact is, point eight percent, right? Your operating budget is gonna go, go up over the, over the two percent.
Your time is up, buddy. It's way up. Thank you. Go to Daria. Hello, Daria.
One, I just wanted to ask you guys, when you expect to return to in-person trustee meetings?
Um, a lot of that depends upon when, uh, the governor lifts the emergency order, but I'm hoping by the fall.
By the fall?
I'm hoping. I am not, don't take that as a, you know, I'm hoping by the fall.
I just wanted to confirm, because there was a computer sound halfway through your sentence. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Mr. Teager?
Sorry, just took the mute off. Um, yeah, I wanted to, I sent you an email today about the, um, payment for the seawall at Harbor Island Park um, that was made, I believe, at the beginning of May as a manual pay, completely inappropriately, 106, $7, 107,000 payment. Putting aside the impropriety of paying that without board review. When I asked for the invoice for the work, I received an invoice with a total amount of 114,000 dollars. I wrote, oh, that's not what I asked for. I asked for the invoice for 107,000, the one you paid. At the last meeting, you made another, I believe, totally inappropriate payment to an engineer. I'm not sure why you're doing this, why, you know, board review, the legal required board review of payments. Um, and I think I've sent you the section of Village Law 5-524. These are, you know, you're supposed to review when you spend the public's purse. So I hope you'll bring some scrutiny to this. I mean, I was stunned to get this invoice and see that it was rendered on January 6th. Why it became an emergency to pay at the end of March. And I'm also really surprised to see that it appears to be for the work to the East Basin Wall. Which, from my observation, and I wasn't there every day, was fairly minor work. I mean, we have a West Basin Wall. I thought this was for some kind of shoring up of that pretty significant issue near the rampway to the docks and further down where it's roped off. So I don't, really just don't think it's responsible that keeps allowing money to be spent this way. This board is supposed to have control over the public purse. I hope you will begin to exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, let's get to the order of the bills. We now, we now hit the part where it's actually the agenda. Uh, resolution authorization to exec, execute budget transfers to fund over budget accounts. Uh, everybody has the, uh, transfers in front of them, from which account to which account. Uh, there's a lot of them. I will not go through them. Somebody have any questions or concerns about these transfers?
Okay.
Jerry, could you just give a brief explanation of the larger ones?
There's 12,000 from Public Works seasonal to sanitation personnel. There's 18,000 from Central Garage personnel to street maintenance personnel.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's what it is. Within, within the departments, we're moving money around to cover, because we have a sanitation department that's different from the Public Works Department. We have a street maintenance department that's different from the Central Garage. It's all within Public Works, regarding the larger items. But they are just within the Public Works Department, which has many divisions and a very complex department. We're just moving money around to, uh, cover the costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, resolution for authorizing budget transfers.
I'll second.
Mr. Fusco? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the order of bills. Tonight's amount is 317,023.74 cents. Uh, Mr. Barbario, thank you for sending an email around asking if anybody had any concerns today, so you could have time to prepare to address them.
Thank you.
Here tonight, does anybody have any concerns or questions for Mr. Barbario or the group?
I have a couple of questions, uh, on page seven of 43. On contract, on, um, services, uh, can we have in the future what they're for? I, I know it's for stenographic services, but for what, you know, for, is this, um, is it normal court, or is it, these are hearings, or what?
I have to, I'd have to get that from the court, and, and I will. I just can't do that right now. I would have done it.
No, 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 I understand that.
If I knew, if I knew what the question was, I would have done it today.
Right, that's why you asked. I appreciate you asking, Jerry.
In the future, there's no problem. I'll get that. I'll, I'll get a detailed list of where the, the steno, what the steno services are used for.
No, I, what I just want to know is, except for the court, the normal court things, you know, it, it's identified that way. That's, that's, that's all. And the question then is, are these reimbursable anyway, or the, these are costs that the village is obligated to, you know, undertake?
Yeah, it's for court. It's not reimbursable.
Okay, um, on page 35 of 36, and that there've been some mis, 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 mis postings in terms of what they're for, but I still don't know what they're for yet. Uh, for AKRF. There are several, several listings.
Mary, if I could answer this?
Yes.
Fusco is gonna answer.
We had, uh, we had, we had a bill for AKRF, which we had asked to transfer the expenditures from A, A 20405 and 406 and into 421. The manager authorized those transfers. Uh, we just have to reclass those balances into 421 account. The actual expenditures represent, um, salaries available to services provided for land, uh, planning, A C T M, and the land use boards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So i- in the future, instead of just putting a number, since mu- most of us don't know what the number means, we can also include what the project is?
Absolutely. I'll put a note right now to, to address that in the future.
Okay, and I had, um, I think I have one more on page 41. Okay, what I didn't understand is, for your, is this a scheduled payment? That is, this is the fourth payment? Or, it says four, it says year four for Arcadis. So it, it's helpful. I, I know what it's, it's N I and I thing, I assume. But I didn't quite understand what this is a scheduled payment that we, you know, once every, you know,
Every question is, Jerry, what's that payment for? Do we know?
I sent the email detailing that, because I knew this was going to be a question. It was all detailed in the email. It's this year's, it represents 12% of the 150,000 that the board approved that Arcadis is doing this year. How it's listed as year four, 2017, I and I. Um, uh, it's this year's work. And I sent an email because I knew that was going to be confusing.
Mm-hmm.
It was all detailed in the email.
Yeah, you said, you said it before we got, before we got the audit, right? You said.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Last week, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I knew I was gonna get that question. Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, now, Jerry, I really appreciate the email that you sent, asking us, uh, to delineate the questions or concerns, so you could have the answer, uh, for us, and hopefully we'll, we'll use that, keep doing that every week, and we'll use that in the future. And trustees can, uh, help you prepare for what their questions might be.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to remember, uh, and do that, um, every, uh, every meeting, before every meeting, because it's.
Yeah, I think that was helpful for someone. Thank you. Uh, I need a motion to accept.
Still moved. Second.
Well, we see no.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi.
Well, we see no coming down. Okay. Uh, old business, resolution scheduling public hearing for P L O D 2021, media parking on West Boston Post Road. Uh, we have been trying to get this done for a while. Uh, this will set the public hearing to change the law to allow media parking on Boston Post Road from the entrance to Harbor Island Park, uh, all the way down to Delancey Avenue, Oriente Avenue. Uh, just so, basically, in the area, uh, in front of Harbor Island Park. Uh, so the public here will be on June 14th, 2021, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
I need a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Well, we see no.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi. Uh, I'm for a resolution authorizing engineering service, uh, for Mamaroneck, which transfer station roof. Uh, this is a capital project that, uh, had to be done, uh, to protect both the equipment uh, of the compactor, but also, uh, to protect the men and women who work down there. It's a very dangerous job working around a compactor on a good day, in, in clement weather, a slip or a fall, and you could lose an arm, or you could use, lose a life. So this is, uh, both to protect the equipment, but most importantly, to protect our staff. Jerry, you have any questions, uh, or anything to say about this?
Mayor, two weeks ago, the engineering services for the transfer station roof was was listed at 62,025 dollars. Um, the board asked us staff to go back and take a look to see if we can reduce that number. And so I asked Assistant Building Inspector Dennis Drogen and our, um, electrician, Kevin Jameson, as long, as lo, as well as Tony. And, uh, from 62,000, we are now at 53, 53,125. Uh, because we went back and, and we went back to take a look at what we can save regarding the engineering services. So we saved about $9,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tippett has his hand up. Three minutes.
Yeah. Again, this is, uh, this is the exact point. This is something that needed to be done. But there's no reason that this shouldn't have been, uh, included in capital projects for '21, '22 at some time in the last four months. You have to have a living document, because now you're spending this money on this project. What project are you pushing back, or are you going to be doing extra funding? My challenge to the trustees right now is, does any one of you know which is the next priority project that is to be done in the capital budget? And how much are you going to be spending this year on capital projects? You don't have a budget. You don't know what the next project. Jerry has a list of priorities. What is the top of that priority list? That's what you have to get your hands around. And if new items come up, like this item, or the, the roofing items that are about to come up with the courthouse and the police station, they're added to the list, you reprioritize the list, and you have to figure out how to pay for them, because a, as of right now, outside of bonding, state fund, state aid, or grants, there is no money in the budget to, to pay for anything. Your operating budget is 600,000 dollars borrowing from unassigned reserve funds for this year. And once you spend more, more than 1.5 million dollars, which is what's paying off in the principal on your debt this year, every penny after that, every million dollars after that is 80,000 dollars that you're gonna be spending towards your operating budget for next year. You have a lot of things. I know, uh, that Tony mentioned Halsted Avenue is to the point where it's gotta be moved up on the priority list. You're doing all these roofs. You also have the roof for the, uh, schoolhouse. I can't believe you're doing five roofs in the village, none more on the plan. The one, the one roof that is on the actual budget is the old schoolhouse roof. And that also has to be done. You have to sit, prioritize what, what, what your capital projects are. How much do, money do you have in the budget to spend? And how much are you getting in state aid, state grants, um, other, other funding sources? And how much funding can this village absorb over the next 12 months with the capital projects that are approved? And which ones are you gonna approve? Thank you.
Okay, uh, we need a motion?
Still moved. Thank you, Jerry, for finding those savings. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Second.
Boy. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Jerry, and thank you to the staff, and hopefully everybody will, uh, be safe this winter working down here. And I vote yes.
All right.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution scheduling a public hearing for community development block grant applications for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and 2024 funding cycles. Uh, for those, uh, who are new to the process, community development block grants are money from HUD, Housing and Urban Development, that is, uh, funneled through the county and then distributed, uh, to the communities, uh, through the county. Uh, you have to compete for projects. Uh, we have areas that are low, uh, to middle-income, uh, areas, and that gives us an advantage. And over the years, the Village of Mamaroneck has, uh, gotten a lot of projects done for the community development block grant. Uh, we buried the wires on Mamaroneck Avenue. Uh, we built the spray ground, uh, years ago. The playground at, uh, Stanley Avenue Park was a community development block grant. Uh, sidewalks in, uh, sidewalks in Washingtonville were a community development block grant. So the village has, uh, realized billions and millions of dollars through this program. Uh, and hopefully, uh, we will be successful this year in, uh, getting more grants and, uh, doing more projects in this community. So this sets the, uh, date for that same date, June 14th, 2021. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Thanks. Uh, hearing done, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Still moved. I'll second.
So, well, we see no.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi. Thank you. Uh, resolution accepting a bench donation. Uh, and this bench donation is donated by Ms., Ms. Eileen Puleo. Uh, and it's, uh, dedicated to a loving memory of Grandma Dot. Uh, Ms. Puleo is also a Town of Mamaroneck employee. Uh, very nice family. Uh, my children went to school with her children. Uh, uh, thank you to the donation, Ms. Puleo and your family. And thank you to Grandma Dot, whose memory we will remember as we stroll down in the park. Uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all you please. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wayne Scher?
Yes.
Nat Jezz?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution authorizing execution of Kellid Sessions' contracts for I and I construction oversight. Jerry, just want to give us a little background.
Mayor, under a long-term consent order, that we're finally, uh, moving forward on regarding a sten, sanitary sewer rehabilitation in areas eight, 11, 13, and 14. Um, the board was kind enough to approve a 5.1 million dollar rehabilitation project. That project requires, since we have a, a 1.082 million dollar grant, and probably more to come, specific paperwork and documentation by a licensed engineer. So with our consulting engineer. with our consulting engineer, Kellid Sessions, I started negotiating the oversight of this project when it comes to making sure that we file the proper paperwork, that we're documenting everything. We started at a four-hundred-thousand-dollar number. We worked back and forth and we got to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the promise that staff, Tony, Mark Carraro, Michael Iannarelli would be participating in the oversight. And, uh, so we're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Kellid Sessions contract oversee a project that typically would cost four to five hundred thousand dollars, a, a project of this size and magnitude. That's it in a nutshell.
A contractor is gonna regret today Tony Acquavelli was standing over watching the work.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I, I, I want to thank Jerry for taking this on. I think this exemplifies your attention to these details. You're staying on top of things. We're finally addressing this. It's long past due, and the, the fact that you've been so on this and been able to involve staff to save the village money on this consent order is laudable. You know, th- thank you, Jerry. You're serving the village residents very well.
Thank you.
The, uh, yeah, I want to echo that. This has been, this, this is, this should have been solved before you got here.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm appreciative of the fact that we're actually getting it done.
Thank you, Nora. I definitely want it off my back, so.
And you know what? I, I, I just want to point out that Jerry and Bob Spozino have been working hard with Save the Sound to keep them, uh, at bay and to keep them from, uh, initiating a new lawsuit. And I think that this is very instrumental in that. I want to thank both Bob and Jerry for their hard work on that issue.
Thanks. Yeah.
So we have a motion a second here? We don't have any motions.
So moved. I will move.
Kelly moved?
Second.
Laura seconds. Augie, please. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchra?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Mary Murphy?
Hi. Okay, we did four E, four F is going to be held. Mr. Spozino, four F is going to be ready, uh, resolution authorizing. We got a, we got a parking that will be in June?
Uh, I believe that it will be mayor pending my discussions with the attorney for the, um, the other parties.
Okay, thank you. Communication number two. Glenn? Mr. Tippett?
Yeah, um, when we did the operating budget, one of the things that was presented to us by the rec department was they were going to keep down the water bill at the spray ground by limiting the time use of it. I think that is a disservice to our children. And I think that this board auto uh, put thirty thousand dollars more into the, uh, the, into the budget for water for the spray ground. I don't think it should be limited use for the children. And I would just, uh, put thirty thousand dollars in additional sales tax because your number is probably a little low on that. But I think that's one thing that we all kind of dropped the ball on. These are the children of the community. I don't think there should be any limits on uh, uh, time use of the spray ground for the children during the summer for the Village of Mamaroneque. Um, we are, we are, again, are still, we have police cars that are now in the capital budget. I'm not even quite sure how you bond them because they lose eighty percent of their value after three years, and we don't keep any police cars more than six, seven years. So I, I'm not even sure how, how it's possible to put them into a bond of, of ten years because you simply, the item is going to be gone. They, basically, you lose eighty percent of your value of your police cars in, uh, two, two to three years, and we probably turn them over in six or seven years. Again, that's something that you're going to have to start to move that from uh, capital to operating. There's other things in the capital budget that simply have to be addressed in the operating budget, and there's going to be some tough decisions that have, have to be made. And again, this has nothing to do with Augie, Jerry, Sally, Lauren, Dan, any of the staff. These are decisions that have to be made by the trustees because the staff, they are going to do the bidding of you as the trustees. But we just can't keep, uh, you know, we, we, we just can't go hand to mouth every year, and you can't have austerity budgets forever. At some point, either we're going to have to make major changes in how we spend, or we're going to have to bait, bite, bite the bullet and increase our revenue for the types of services that want to be delivered for this community. Thank you.
Okay. I, I just want to say one thing that, that was said before, and I just want to correct it. The Village of Mamaroneque did not borrow six hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget. The Village of Mamaroneque took six hundred thousand dollars out of the reserve fund, which has almost fourteen million dollars in it. And, uh, that is the taxpayers' money. It, there was no deficit. There was no borrowing to, uh, balance the budget. It was taxpayers' money, and that's how it was used. Thank you. Update from the village manager?
Uh, Mayor, I only have those two items. Their contracts are filed for the record. Other than that, I've taken a lot of the trustees and the public's time this evening.
Thank you. Report from Clerk Treasurer.
Yes, Mayor, GP permits expire May thirty-first. They can be purchased online or by appointment in the Clerk Treasurer's office. Uh, the next item is first half tax payments are due June first. Are due during the month of June. That is also a report.
You know, I want to just point something out because I noticed happens in your department. Your department, just for the folks watching at home, has no ability to forgive late fees on taxes.
Under New York State, we have no ability to.
So it, it's not that we don't want to. It's against the law for us to do it. We have no power to do it. And I understand there's a lot of variety of reasons that people can be late. You know, they can have a little financial difficulty, they forget the bill, there could be something going on in their lives that, uh, you know, diverts their attention. I really understand that. I feel for them. We, we do not have the ability to forgive late fees. I just want to point that out because I know your staff takes a lot of, uh, heat over that. And I just want the, the folks to know that it, it is not your staff. I think if, if you guys had the ability to do it, you'd do it.
Unfortunately, we don't.
I know you don't. And I appreciate it. I just want the, the public to know because I know you guys catch a lot of heck. Uh, Mr. Village Attorney?
Nothing from me tonight, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we have minutes of commissions, boards, and committees, minutes of Board of Trustees work sessions and regular meetings of May tenth, twenty-twenty-one, minutes of the Traffic Commission meeting of April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, members of, minutes of the Board of Architecture Review, April fifteenth, twenty-one, and minutes of the Board of Ethics meeting of April fifth and April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, minutes of the HCZMC meeting of September sixteenth and October twenty-first. Uh, I just want to point out one thing. Today, the folks from the US Open gave us this lovely plaque. I don't think you can see it on TV, but it'll be in Village Hall, commemorating the village, uh, effort in having an accept, a successful US Open in spite of the pandemic. And I want to, uh, thank Jerry and the Recreation Department and the staff and all the people who worked on Harbor Island for making this a reality. The village, uh, realized some real revenue out of it, and, uh, the tournament was played. Although there weren't fans, it was also a successful tournament. And we found out today that they are going to be back in a shorter period of time. They're going to be back in seven years. So another board, hopefully, will be sitting here, uh, in seven years, welcoming them back. But they gave us this nice thing, you know, kind of looks like the Book of Kells. They really did a nice job on it. So thank them. This weekend starts the summer. The beach is open starting Friday. Uh, please come down, enjoy Harbor Island Beach. You know, the spray ground will be open this weekend for the children. Please have a safe summer. This will be the first summer that we could all kind of relax a little bit. If you haven't gotten your vaccine yet, please seriously consider getting your vaccine. I- i- if you're nervous about it, I, I implore you to, uh, talk to your doctor or another health professional. The quicker we all get vaccinated, the quicker we all can get back to our normal lives. Thank you all, and I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, you know, wait, 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 Tom. There's someone with a hand up.
We, we, we've passed that. I'll, I'll allow it. Michelle.
Hi, yeah, we, um, we were, we've been on the email chain with you guys for nine months now about an issue that's been raised for, as I understand it, nearly a decade. And obviously Kelly is on the line, so she's very familiar with it, as are you, Tom. And it specifically relates to the Fenimore Prospect Intersection, which we flagged for a number of years as being very unsafe. Tom, you sent an email back to the group of us, there are about thirty of us on the group, where you mentioned that you yourself have walked that intersection over a number of years. Now your daughter walks it with your fourteen-month-old grandchild and so on. So, so we've all acknowledged the safety issues around that. Kelly, you mentioned you'd added it to the agenda this evening, but we've been on for over two hours now, and this hasn't been mentioned. So I was wondering what, um, what's going to happen about that?
Well, um, Tom, if you don't mind, I, I'll say that this has been on our work session agenda for many, many weeks. And unfortunately, we are still backlogged in tonight's work session, which was held from five to seven-thirty. We did add an additional work session meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, the first, the day after Memorial Day. And we hope to start blowing through some of our backlogged work agenda items then.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what are the odds that it's going to be considered? I mean, I, I feel like, you know, again, this has been backlogged for nine months, and prior to that, it's been backlogged for a number of years. So is there any way that it can actually be discussed on May first?
May first, you mean June first? I, I, you know, I would say, I, I would say it's going to be discussed in the month of June. We'll try to get to it on June first. But there's a, a number of things that have been backlog. Uh, it'll be discussed in the month of June. What we're trying to do is hold this, you know, what, what usually gums up the works is we have executive sessions that go on very long, and we don't get to the regular, uh, enough on a regular agenda. So we've decided to just have a work session with no executive session to try and plow through some stuff. So if we can get that done, uh, if we don't get to that on the first, we should probably get to it on the fourteenth because it, it, it will have moved up the chain.
But can we, can we maybe schedule it so that, I mean, obviously, we've, we've all been on for many hours. It would just be nice to know when this is going to be heard. Although it is actually very interesting to hear the expenditures and so on. It, it's actually very valuable information to see how things are run, but I would like to have a better sense of when it's actually going to be on the agenda. Good, because this is, this does interest a number of people, many of whom are quite old and who've actually been on the line for a number of hours this evening. So if there's any way of identifying a, a date and time, that would be really great.
That, that's, that's what I'm trying to do here.
So June first or June fourteenth?
Yeah, that, that, that's would, would be.
But.
That, that would be, you know.
So any of those eight hours?
But it.
No, no, Ms. Schle. It, it would be discussed in the work session, which happens between five and seven-thirty.
Got it. But so five hours, got it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at our work session agenda from tonight, and it wasn't on it.
It should be part of the walking safety assessment agenda. I mean, it's, it's that item that is supposed to be just carried over.
Yeah.
It's quite possible it never was put on it, Nora.
No, that's not true.
I think it needs to be added. I'm not seeing it. So I think we need to, 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 to put it on.
So who has the power to add that now so it can be discussed either on June first or June fourteenth?
I will add that for June first.
It's going to be on June first, okay?
Okay, June first. It's now officially added to the agenda.
Let, let, let's not get crazy. It's on June first.
Okay, just want to confirm. Great.
Have a good night.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, what were we doing? Oh, we were doing a motion to adjourn. Somebody want to do that?
I moved to adjourn. I think I did previously. To adjourn.
I'll second.
All favor.
I.
Absolutely.
Have a good evening.
Bye.